Exceed those numbers. They have been signed off, oh, I shouldn't say signed off. The village in any instance where it affects them, they have been informed of it. They're aware of the numbers, that they suffer a little bit more than we do based upon the village tax parcel. Most impact is to the school district. And most importantly there, the only case which you have on this list which they intervened, which means they need more input and they effectively do have an approval aspect of the settlement, was Friendly's. And they have approved that and they have no objection whatsoever to that being settled on the basis of the resolution. Notice that Malta has been pulled from that list because again, the board, school board has not had a chance to verify and have their input on that proposal for that particular taxer, although that also is subject of a proposal of settlement. So what you've got is simply resolutions, each one of them, which again reaffirm that it's based upon a recommendation of the assessor, our appraiser, and my office, and based upon an analysis, we do in fact recommend that you affirmatively adopt these proposed settlements. In turn, if we do so, the applicants, petitioners will be preparing all the paperwork, and which you will see again, because many times it's supervisor that's assigned and or the assessor and or my office, but either way, you'll see it again.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. Would someone like to make a motion regarding the Edward Depoli tax resolution surcharge?
So, second.
Any discussion?
Just general discussion, just to reiterate that any of the other taxing entities that involve school and village, if the village is involved, they have had notification on all of these surcharges and we took all their input and they participated when they wanted to, at least had the opportunity to participate. So it's not like we're just settling these because they are also involved. I just want to make that perfectly clear.
Also, just to expand on that, in fairness, yeah, the school district, absolutely, the village, absolutely. Now, who I do not correspond with or contact with is the fire district.
Right.
Now, the fire district, although again, certainly a taxing jurisdiction, the effect to them is normally minimal.
Minimal.
But I don't, we just do not make the effort and or take the time to keep them abreast.
And the library, the library too.
Library is through the school.
Who is the other guy? Just fire.
Just fire, yeah, and the county, and that's the county, that's what I'm well aware.
Yeah, yes, okay.
I'd also like to comment that probably for each one of these, we've had three or four sessions, marathon sessions, in my office with our attorney, the assessor, Mr. Cantorino, who's the commissioner of finance, myself, going through all of these. We brought all those findings to the town board, we reviewed these in extensively in executive session, so this is not new to any of us. Okay, is there any discussion regarding the Edward Depoli?
No.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Cantorino?
Aye.
Councilman Lyons?
Aye.
Councilman Newbo?
Aye.
Councilman Capella?
Aye.
Supervisor Bloomfield?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. The next one is settling the taxer's share for Butcher Block, which for laypeople is the old Wayne's your building for just one year. Would someone like to make a motion regarding this resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Cantorino?
Aye.
Councilman Lyons?
Aye.
Councilman Newbo?
Aye.
Councilman Capella?
Aye.
Supervisor Bloomfield?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. The next one is Friendly's Ice Cream Corporation. Would someone like to make a motion regarding this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, discussion I had is, is, you know, in all the rest of them, I believe, there was numbers, but there is no numbers on this particular one, and why is that?
Should have been attachment. I don't see attachment.
Oh.
No.
I don't either. You have it in yours? Do you have one with you?
No. Again, I would recommend, for that very reason, just put it off.
Right.
The next meeting.
Okay, would someone like to withdraw then their motion? Okay, very good.
Yeah, I'll withdraw then. Yeah, just so you're aware, some of them, we incorporated in the resolution, other ones, because they're so voluminous, we attached the actual proposed settlement.
Right.
For some reason, it's not attached, so we removed it next meeting.
Okay, the next one is authorization to retain Malinas Realty Inc. appraiser for the town negotiation regarding proceedings of Benchmark versus the town of Goshen. And it is, cost, to do this work is $4,500. Any additional hourly work would be $175 per hour. Would someone like to make a motion regarding this resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
If I may, I just wanted to point out that if you read the attachment from Malinas, what we do on these, that's the estimated total for the appraisal, which would be trial ready. If you refer to the very last paragraph, subdivision A, where he indicates that initially to do the research required by my office to hold the settlement conferences, which work should be in the neighborhood of $31.50. So we segmentize it so that we build up to the trial appraisal. It's not, you know, we were committing to these numbers ideally, in fact, I think in every instance so far, it's been less than the proposal, because we've never resolved it or even go to trial unless it's a.
Okay, very good. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote on this one, please?
Councilman Cantorino?
Aye.
Councilman Lyons?
Aye.
Councilman Newbo?
Aye.
Councilman Capella?
Aye.
Supervisor Bloomfield?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, the next one is settlement of the surcharge claimed by Michael A. Gurda. Would someone like to make a motion regarding this surcharge?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just want to point out to the board, this is a bit different. As you know, most residential homes are subject to SCAR, small claims assessment review.
It's going to be like questions.
However, if a petitioner asks for more than a 25% reduction in the assessment, it is no longer classified as a small claims assessment review, it's put into Article 7. So you're going to see this periodically, this happens to be one of the number of them we have, where the petitioner is asking, doesn't mean they're going to get it, it just means that they were asking for more than a 25% reduction, which puts them in a different classification.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Cantorino?
Aye.
Councilman Lyons?
Aye.
Councilman Newbo?
Aye.
Councilman Capella?
Aye.
Supervisor Bloomfield?
Aye. Motion carries. This next one is, you can see in your packet, we've got a letter from Riddick Associates, and they're saying that all the work done and all the paperwork and follow-up for the adjutants which road improvement has been completed, and it's now ready for payment. This will be paid directly to the company that did the work, Pecan Materials Corporation, by the county. It's not reimbursed us, and we pay it, the county pays it directly. So I've got the paperwork here tonight for, I've signed it, but each one of us have to initial it before it can be sent to the county. So this is just an informational thing, at the end of the meeting, before we go home, I'm going to have you initial that.
If I may, just to expand on that, I just wanted the board to know, today I issued an opinion to Riddick that the surplus monies, which we did not utilize in the grant, are available for the sealing of that road project without additional competitive bid, they can be rolled into the existing project by change order, just so the board is aware. Because again, correspondence.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I was going to ask that.
Yeah, the correspondence went directly to Riddick, which in turn will go to the county, the board should be aware.
Right. And Joanne Fazino in the county said, yep, she could do it. So it's going to be a done deal, we just got to wait for the right weather.
Okay.
Seal it, right?
Ceiling, and that will add another five, probably years to it, to the road.
Right.
It's a good thing to do.
Just a question, I know you said that, Doug, but in this letter, it says, it's made it able to change then, because it says, the Orange County Office of Community Development will issue a check to the town. After receiving the check, the town is required to issue payment to the contractor within 72 hours.
Guess that must be the way it is, then. Okay.
So I guess it's coming to us first, is that the way it goes?
That's what I think.
Yes. Goes to the Ms. Palp.
Well, that's interesting, because when we were doing all the legwork, they said they were sending, but that's fine, if we want to go through our bank account.
Yeah, they're looking for proper change. It's our project.
Right.
Sure. Okay.
Well, I'm saying the heels of the last check is.
Yeah, they're looking more carefully.
My account, I understand.
Okay, the next item is, would someone like to make a motion, we approve town board minutes of work sessions, 2/7/2011 and 2/22/2011, and regular meeting, meetings of 1/27/11 and 2/10/11?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any additions or corrections to that minutes?
Yes, I don't have any corrections, good job of you, but I wanted to abstain from three of those meetings.
Okay.
And I wanted to vote on the February 22nd, and the reason why I wanted to abstain was I wasn't here.
Okay, well, let's do this, then. Can we break that into two motions? And the first one being then that we will vote on, which one was it, 1/27?
2/22, I was here, so I want to vote on that, but not on the other three.
All right.
Or abstain.
All in favor in regard to the 2/22 meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Now, for the 2/7, 1/27, and 2/10, would someone like to make a, oh, we made a motion, okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. This next item is to review the status of village-town sewer arbitration. And I put this in the general meeting because we have had questions from people in the past, where are we at? And we've related to people that we're going to start very soon. Dennis, can you tell us where the status of this is?
Very briefly, we were to commence the arbitration today.
Right.
But on Monday, we had an extensive conference with the arbitrator, and the village has additional counsel in connection with the arbitration. And the issue came up as to the concept of separation of powers, and that they are now presently taking the position that there is no legal right to have this issue arbitrated, that it's precluded by the doctrine of separation of powers. And arbitrator Cameron asked that the issue be briefed. So what the tentative schedule is, on or before April 15th, the village is to submit briefs on the legal issue, we'll have a chance to respond, and then he will rule on it. And at the present time, as I advise the supervisor, which is not for public consumption at this time, there are a number of alternatives which we may need to discuss, make decisions on, and proceed accordingly, but it would not be, I don't believe, appropriate to have that discussion in the public domain.
Well, as part of that discussion for the public's information, and for my information, so they brought additionally, are they hiring additional lawyers, are they bringing additional counsel other than?
Well, there's more manpower. Yeah, there's more, yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes, it is.
Which means.
Yeah, I don't know what they're doing.
Now, if that's, if there are more attorneys, are they talking about bringing an additional or different legal action again?
No, no, what the issue is, probably to capitalize it for you, as we've been developing the issues and the procedures for the arbitration, it came up, and it has been, been discussed based upon our witness list, and issues we've been discussing with the arbitrator, they were able to, I believe, glean in some respect what our defense is and what our position is, vis a vis these various issues we've discussed in the arbitration. They take the legal position at the present moment that the act of approving the new village sewer plant is a legislative act, which is not reviewable by any other branch of government, be it executive or be it judiciary. And if the act of deciding whether to build or construct the new sewer plant is in fact a legislative act, then any number of issues which flow from that also could not be reviewed, they being legislative decisions or judgmental, governmental decisions by that board. And there's case law, since, you know, the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, along those lines, separation of powers, et cetera. However, the corresponding defense is that, all well and good, but it may be a deprivation or taking of property without due process, so maybe many times that's the counter argument.
Oh, Dennis.
Oh, yeah, this is going to get deep.
Come on, you know what?
I know.
What I'm going to do is try to simplify.
I understand.
So I understand. So what they're saying is, they're going to the arbitrator and telling the arbitrator, I don't know why the arbitrator, that there's a legal issue that they're going to deal with legally, and not in the course of arbitration, is this whole thing, in the course of, you got to let me go through this thing, so I understand it myself. So instead of going to the judge who said, you will arbitrate this and it will not be taken up legally.
Which was Judge Slowbot.
With Judge Slowbot, and appointed an arbitrator, the village is now getting more attorneys and trying to bring a different legal issue, but not back to Judge Slowbot. They're trying to go to the arbitrator and say, this is a legal thing and it's not an arbitrating thing, why are they going to him at all?
Because again.
And why aren't we pressing forward with arbitration?
Well, because.
I'll assume myself again, Dennis.
I understand, no, again, don't misunderstand, I understand, it's not a separate suit. What happened was, when the village initially sued us, commenced the litigation, we filed motions to compel them to arbitrate the matter based on the terms of the contract. Again, procedurally speaking, we never filed an answer. We never disclosed what our position was vis a vis the village's claims. So you've got, for instance, allegations out there in their complaint, which say various things about the billing, and we didn't pay it, et cetera. And our response was, no, 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 you can't even go there yet, you've got to arbitrate.
Right.
Judge Slowbot agreed with our position.
Right.
And compelled the village to arbitrate with us over the issue.
Right.
At that point in time, if you, again, we've had discussions along these lines, it was agreed that the arbitrator's decision would be final.
With the village and us.
Correct. You know, it would be no appeals, win, lose, or draw, it was some finality, we had to get on with it.
So now, now that that's done.
Right.
They have hired other attorneys to come in and proceed on a different legal basis, with a legal rather than arbitration.
Well.
Just make it simple, Dennis.
Yeah, but we're trying to, but here's how it arose, when, because they did not know what the basis of our defense was.
Doesn't matter, Judge Slowbot said to arbitrate it.
Correct.
The issue.
No question.
Is this a separate issue that they're bringing?
You could argue that.
Not argue, is it a separate issue where it's not part of the arbitration, it's not part of the whole process? Is this a separate issue that they are not bringing to the table that we did not know about, Slowbot did not know about? Is it a different defense than was before?
No, I would say no. What it is, if you follow, in terms of logic, the village, as you know, is suing us on a theory of accounts stated, goods sold and delivered, and again, we paid certain monies and, if you will, shorted them on the ballots. They then commenced an action for the shorted ballots. The appearance off of their papers, not ours, because we've never filed any, is that the issue is about the accuracy of the billing, one and one, maybe they add it to three. So that's how the arbitration has been proceeding.
Right.
Not from our purposes, but from their perception. As we're getting ready for the arbitration to commence today, certain issues were raised, as the board is aware, in terms of, and again, I have to get into this if you want to discuss it publicly.
Well, I don't want to discuss the terms of the agreement, but I want to discuss what happened to this arbitration. We went in in good faith, they agreed that the arbitrators, and it's the same issue, unless.
But it's not.
Well, wait a minute, I asked you if there were two separate issues. You said, no, the way you understood it. Now, if it's not two separate issues, then the arbitrator, we should go forward with the arbitrator, but why is, and why haven't they gone to Slowbot?
We may have to, we may have to. Why I say that is this, when you speak issues, issues within the arbitration are many, it's not just one or two.
Okay.
This isn't what they call a jurisdiction issue, authority, power.
But that's not within the arbitration.
It should be.
It's new.
It should be.
Well, then it should just stay with the arbitrator.
Well, that's what, again, and again.
And why didn't we start arbitrating this thing?
For this reason, yeah, for this reason.
Ah.
Well, this came about Monday, on my reaction.
I know you were broadsided, so I understand.
Well, strangely enough, and again, you have to understand the picture.
Don't defend anybody else, but understand.
No, 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 no.
Thank you. Go ahead. I'm just, you can see I'm upset at this.
No, and I fully understand it, the frustration.
I'm upset.
We were ready to go.
We've been ready for two years, we've been saying we want to arbitrate. Now, they're bringing some new issue in, not new issue.
In fairness, it's analogous to you being sued, for instance, on a civil basis, somebody sues you for $15,000.
Right.
You could file that suit in justice court in front of Judge Young or Kim Van Hester, you could file that suit in county court, because they have jurisdiction on that amount, you could file that in state court. If you can obtain what they call federal jurisdiction, any case above $10,000 could be moved to White Plains.
Right.
For various reasons, you may pick that forum, okay?
But we didn't all agree upon that. Originally, when we went into this, we wasted a lot of our money.
Correct.
And they wasted a lot of money.
Oh, yeah, I wish the issue, I wish the issue would come up sooner, no question.
Well, the day, the day they go to arbitration, they say, no, we can't arbitrate now because there's a, this is a new issue, did you know about this?
No.
Did the arbitrator know? Did Judge Slowbot know? Did we know?
No.
No. It's not a new issue?
But the issue, well, again, issues perhaps are wrong work, the question is whether their decision to build the new sewer plant is an examinable issue by an arbitrator or a court, because it's a legislative decision.
But shouldn't have been raised at the original arbitration, when we went to Slowbot? Shouldn't this have been part of the package? Listen.
I think so.
Well, so.
hindsight's 20/20, but.
We're not going to be doing it again.
Just in being objective, they, at the time, and I think it is on Monday, they believed that our presentation was going to involve extensive evidence indicating some arithmetic errors in the calculation of the bills, as this board knows.
We all agreed that the calculation was.
Let me see if I can.
Exactly right.
We agreed that there was no issue.
Get away a little bit on this.
Go ahead.
I'm going to try to simplify this all.
Without a no disrespect.
Oh, yeah, no, no. It's a very difficult.
Needs to be clear.
We were.
It's a very difficult, complex legal issue.
And they brought it forward without arbitrating this thing and getting rid of this and coming to some fair conclusion. I'm sorry, Dennis.
Let me just wrap it up before Doug comments, because in answer to your overall question, I was upset with them bringing it forward on Monday. The arbitrator was concerned as to why at such a late time this was brought forward.
Absolutely.
And my response, and we argued, we discussed it for probably close to two and a half hours, and the arbitrator's ultimate decision was, fine, we'll brief it. By brief it, I mean submit legal arguments and the town can respond. And in turn, I commented at that time, I'm like, well, look, and it's absurd for us to go forward and spend all this money and all this time to have the arbitration, to put our witnesses on the stand commencing today, if in fact a subsequent ruling possibly or conceivably could have been, there was no authority for the arbitrator to even hear the case. So I made the decision, we'll find, if you want us to brief it, then we're not going to go forward with the arbitration at this time.
Well, that should be, let me see, Slowbot, right? She's the one that would decide whether it's a legal issue or an arbitration.
Good question.
Not the arbitrator.
That's what we're chewing on.
You can't say, you know, I think it should or it shouldn't. It's Slowbot, it's like, you will or you won't.
Well, if you can imagine, if you understand what the setting we were in, where we've agreed that the arbitrator's decision is not appealable, I had hoped that the arbitrator would have ruled on Monday that their position was not valid, and we were going to proceed with the arbitration and discussion.
And if he does say, you know, there's a valid ruling, we spent all this money going to the arbitrator and it's going to go back to Slowbot, she may then again say, you know, they're wrong, it's still an arbitration issue.
It may or may not go back to Slowbot, and that hasn't been determined yet. Because again, I had hoped the arbitrator would make the decision.
Okay, guys, you've had long enough. Let me, let me just.
No, 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 you're wrong. Go get some water, Dennis.
Because I'd like to weigh in this as well. I come to work every day, every day, and I, every time we send a bill out for water and sewer, which is every quarter, for two weeks, I get calls every day from people angry, disappointed, they call me, I've got notes, little love notes on their bills when they pay them, thief, crook, what do you pay, Mr. Bloomfield, you're outrageous, yada, 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 yada. My secretary is, or assistant is the same way, and Ken, co-chairs with water and sewer with me, is the same way. One of the things I've told these people is, we will have our day, we will have a time when we can say our piece, and you will be heard, because it's in the contract, arbitration is a way to settle these disputes. I spent three days last week preparing to be a witness. Now, our attorney for the town goes to a meeting on Monday, and there are three lawyers in the room opposing this position, one from Rockland County, the big out-of-town expert, two from the same law firm. Now, all I hear in the advertisements and everything else for this election come up, we want peace with the town. I'm going to this and I'm going to that. Well, you know what? This is no way to get started. We think we have a strong case and it needs to be heard, win, lose, or draw, that's it. The people have a right to that. We have no knobs to turn, none. The village board can build the plant, operate the plant, move the dirt pile, redo the dirt pile, test the dirt pile, do all kinds of things, and every time it does, it goes to our cost sheet. And we have no say-so in that, okay? None. Nor do our people vote for the people on the village's board. So there's no control. And that's where the frustration comes from, when you have all responsibility but none of the control. As I've said to the board here, let your teenage child go out, you want them home at midnight, at 3:00 in the morning, they're not home. They have the control, but you have the responsibility and your anxiety goes up. This needs to be heard. This needs to be heard for the town of Goshen and the village of Goshen, to put it to rest and not have one more legal maneuver to put us in the backseat, period.
To waste our money.
And to waste our money. What did it cost for that legal representation from Rockland County and the additional attorney? I thought we had this resolved with Judge Slowbot, okay? I certainly hope that's where it's going to go, you know? So, anyway, that's what I say, because I'm trying to think of the citizens in the village and the citizens of the town who want us, want us to put this behind us. I mean, this is their community. I don't want us to be like the people out in Wisconsin, I don't want us to be like the people down in Washington DC. And after a while, they say, well, who are these people leading us around? Now, when are people are cynical of the leaders in our communities and our state government and everywhere else? Because they're, they're doing things that are not for the good of the people, and so Because they're, they're doing things that are not for the good of the people, and so I'm just resting it at that.
Just clarify one thing.
Thank you.
The issue, which is being briefed, is again, separation of powers, and whether there is authority for anybody, arbitrator or not, to examine these issues, I mean, decisions by the village. The point is that there's been no determination yet. It's just been, it's like getting a ruling, if you will, or going to the videotape to review the actual activity. And so, and I know this is hard for laymen to understand, but because the arbitrator ruled that he would take submissions and would make a decision on this issue, doesn't mean that he's leaning one way or another. He just intellectually, in fairness, was like, fine, that issue should be resolved before we proceed.
If it's a separate issue of law, then whatever he says really doesn't make any difference, because he's the arbitrator. It has to go to Slowbod for that decision.
Or, under our rules, if you will, the acceptance of the arbitrator being appointed, the acceptance that he is the final determiner, then his decision, even on a procedural matter or a jurisdiction matter like this, is binding, and we would not appeal it. Whether it's we lose, or the village loses, or whoever loses, whatever the decision is.
So you're saying that this new legal action or whatever could take a separation of powers? We can say, no, it's not separation of powers and they have to abide by that? I don't think so, Dennis.
That, that is.
I don't think so.
But believe it or not, that's the.
I would like that.
Right, that's the understanding and the agreement as of this moment. If anything, it's the town has to make a decision as to whether we want to be bound by the arbitrator's decision, whether or not he has jurisdiction. We may, we may want to seek a separate legal opinion as to whether or not that's a proper question for him to even decide.
It's crazy.
Well, yeah, let me say this. What is absolutely fair, because there's a lot of nuances to this, what is absolutely fair is the comment that Doug made, that it is a maneuver, if you will, to avoid testing the merits or letting the merits or the presentations, you know, commence. Because in theory, if it's ruled that separate, this doctrine of separation of powers prohibits this from being examined, then the case is over. If he rules, or a court rules, that the separation of powers doctrine does not apply, then the arbitration will go forward.
Well, I had a separate issue as I lived in. Fairness. Over a cup of coffee, and we've been, and it's just out of, out of control, these people.
In fairness, because I'm not part of the other side, if you will, with the village's presentation. But they have involved, to my knowledge, the emphasis and the people involved mostly come from the village attorney's firm. It's other attorneys who are now participating in it, and they're pretty much from his firm.
Can I have a Rockland County office?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, okay. But that's.
Okay.
No, it's.
Thank you, Dennis.
True problem.
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 no. Since this came about, I'm looking at the executive session. I'd like to put a table to go to the executive session to continue this discussion of strategy and so forth, which is, it's not on this list, I just wanted to add.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, very good, that's good. Okay, the next item is under new business. Would someone like to make a motion to authorize a supervisor to pay accounts payable check run for three ten two thousand eleven, amounting to a hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-three cents? And manual accounts pay which runs as of three ten two thousand eleven, for checks written from two twenty-four two thousand eleven and three nine two thousand eleven, amounting to two thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-three cents?
Oh, no. Second.
Any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are now sure.
Phil, about the credit union.
Oh, yes, good.
Thank you. The question was brought by Neil Hickon. He had asked if we had considered depositing funds and using the checking accounts of the credit union, any credit union. At that particular time, I could think it was legal that we could do that. I said, however, you have to investigate. So I did go up to the Heritage Credit Union. I spoke to an officer, and we were ten minutes down the road, and I said, I really don't think you can do this. However, if you say we can, she said, you know, I better get, call, call someone. And she picked the phone up and said, we can't? No? Really? It was over. You're not even allowed to deposit municipal funds in a credit union. It's got to be a bank, they don't have any FDIC. What they have is an NCPA, National, it's National Credit Alliance or something, Association that will guarantee the two hundred and fifty thousand, but that's not a federal, it's not FDIC. So, but even, we don't even go there. They cannot take municipal funds, and she said to me, oh, boy. I said, what's up? Oh, I need to call a few municipalities, because there were one municipality that she worked with, she knew the person. They put money in there, and it's like, no.
Glad we asked the question.
Thank you, okay, thank you.
Well, I appreciate you looking into that on behalf of Neil and also on our behalf.
Well, yeah.
Okay, now we're up with privilege of the floor, and anything anybody would like to talk about? Gary.
Doug, that is, this situation with the village is really perplexing and convoluted, in my opinion. I had this thing right. Somewhere along the line, we entered into some type of agreement with the village that now gives them the authority to bill us for the usage of their plant.
Right.
Now they build a plant, and now they're saying, oh, bets are off, because when you agreed to this, you're married to us, there's no divorces here. Now you go before Judge Slowbod to get a ruling that, wait a minute, we have a contract that says arbitration is on the table, and we're going to go forth with that arbitration. Now the process of arbitration begins. Somewhere, Donovan whoever says, wait a minute, we could short circuit that. Let's bring a motion, separation of powers here. That takes it all away, in my opinion. It opens up a whole other door here, but the question is, why? How much do we owe them?
Hundred and eight thousand, I think.
That's what they say.
I, I don't know.
In the big picture, this is chump change. There's something here other than a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Whether by going to the separation of powers, Dennis, you can answer this probably better than most, does that lock us in to a non-divorce situation with the village? Whatever they want to do henceforth, we're locked into this thing?
I just want to correct one thing, Gary, because when you started this, I just want to get, understand what you were saying. You did say, when they built the plant, we agreed to it? Is that what you were saying? Because we never agreed to build the plant. I just, I thought that's the way you put it.
No, not to agree to build it or be a partner in it, but we did agree to utilize it.
Fifty, okay, you're talking back to the original IMA fifty-some years ago. All right, I just wanted to get that clear.
There's a marriage here. You got the plant, we're using the plant, and we're going to build a town.
I just want you to clarify, because the way you said.
Dennis. So I am going to say, a municipality do this when the legal bills, as you have said many, many times, are going to far exceed the bill. There has to be.
Yep. It's going forward, it's going forward. It's not, you know, we have to negotiate a new IMA based on, I should think, the things that we get out of this arbitration. That's going to be the basis, hopefully, of a new IMA.
But what happens if they say?
And if it's, guess what?
Separation of powers.
And if there's no change.
You're married to us.
In a nutshell, a couple of things. One, the cost remains to be seen. I hope it doesn't anywhere approach the numbers we're talking about. So I just want to correct that one aspect, because I don't believe I've ever indicated that it would. It is what it is, cost-wise. It's going to cost more than zero, certainly, so it's expensive, and it's charged back to those district residents as it is to the village taxpayers. The issue, and again, I know it's not, it's difficult to understand, if you will, but the issue is, and I believe that the village believes they have a binding legal contract with us to supply or treat our sewer sewage from those two districts. The agreement specifies that any dispute which arises should be subject to arbitration.
That's right.
The village believes that the dispute would have to be in regards arithmetic calculation and accuracy of the bill. It does, they believe that it does not allow an examination of philosophies, theories, methodologies, et cetera, as to how that bill was compiled. One issue, which again, I think is in the public domain, is the stockpile, okay? And the village's position, in a nutshell, I believe, is that the stockpile is a normal flowing decision from the original decision to build the plant. You had to excavate a site, and it so happens, they excavated a site which resulted in certain stockpiling of materials, which they're now hauling away, et cetera. If the separation of powers doctrine allows them to make the legislative decision to build the plant, they argue that it's logical that that decision would cover any and all other decisions in terms of the construction process, including, if you will, the stockpile. And that's what the issue is going to come down to, is whether those, and again, and I think, in answer to the universal question is, I think the village is comfortable and satisfied with the existing contract terminology and terms. The town is not.
We've been talking about this for two years, and that issue has never been approached, period. I have never heard separation of powers, other than the day we're supposed to start negotiations.
That's fair.
I have never heard arbitration about it.
That's fair.
Never heard that term.
And I don't think we ought to be going into the nitty-gritty of what's going to be on the table, no, I know. But, but basically, this is a legal maneuver to eliminate arbitration, and it's over. And that's how I view it.
Yeah, that's fair.
And, and you know what? And that's not what this community needs. That's not what the people in the village need, and it's not what the people in these two subdivisions.
And they just settled the lawsuit with the legal fees for what, two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars?
Two thirty-four.
Two thirty-four.
Plus fifty thousand.
Plus, but even that's the settlement, but the legal fees, so to say they won't reach proportions. They keep coming up with new issues.
Yeah, hard to say.
Yeah.
Hard to say. But let me just clarify, give me an example, because again, it's important that the public and the board be aware of this too. It's analogous, you see it on TV and the news media all the time. There may be an individual like the unfortunate man who shot the congresswoman out in Arizona and killed any number of other people. There were hundreds of witnesses. He readily admits he did it. He's in incarceration now, and he just entered a plea of not guilty. The argument was yesterday, because they're going to use an insanity defense. Now, I'm not in any way intimidating the villagers using the insanity defense. What I'm saying to you is, in the law, the every, each side has an obligation to pursue every possible theory upon which they can be held not liable or not responsible for whatever action. And this is no different than that, you know, separation of powers doctrine.
Didn't we have to frame out the rules of the arbitration?
That's what we were doing on Monday, exactly right.
Now, something here, I'm missing. Let's take the pile of dirt, for instance. Now, that's a residual of building that plant. Is there any way now, they're going to come around and say, oh, wait a minute, the town is in line with all of these, these maneuvers?
Oh, yeah.
You know what? They're responsible also to pay part of that moving of that toxic dirt out there.
Let me say this to you, and in fairness, this is factual, as the board knows, we are being, we have been charged in those two prior bills for a portion of that stockpile.
Yes.
There's no question, but that that theory would be carried forward, I believe.
This is, in my opinion, this is the underlying situation here. It is the milk cust dry, and my position is, what's going on here, as it didn't in the seventeen seventy-six, it's taxation sewer-wise without representation, because during all of this, as you just said, Dennis, they're saying you don't have the right to look at the bill. You don't have the right to do a study. Where are we in this? This is crazy.
Well, you know, I think what we ought to do, because we don't, I don't want to get into the things that are going to be on the table when we do go to arbitration. But I have to agree with you.
Yeah.
That you're, that's what you think, like I think on this, and I think this is, this is a, this is a, I think, I'm sorry, it's a legal maneuver to get out from underneath the arbitration where they have a possibility of losing. Simple, because we think we have a case. I don't know if it's going to be strong or weak or whatever it is, but we, I think, and I'm, and I guess I'm too much of a theorist. I believe I'm in office to do the good of all the people, the people of the village and the people in town. In fairness, it's the doctrine we need to follow, in common sense. And when you go out and hire more attorneys with more degrees and more whatever, to see if you can't trip everything up and get everything in your mind, well, you know what? There's always another attorney, there's always a brighter one, there's always one with more knowledge on a specific little map. And I think that's what I'm seeing. And so, again, I go back to, if we are going to really resolve and pull together as a community, village and town, as I hear in reading in the paper, then by godly, then let's go on to arbitration, get this behind us, do it, win, lose, or draw on both teams, and be done with it. And then start moving on on all those other things that are important. As Phil was beginning to allude to, this could have been resolved probably over a cup of coffee a couple of years ago. But it didn't. It turned into a.
An issue.
Well, and to, and.
Certainly.
I'm blanking.
And we have never changed, and we have never changed our position.
No.
We still haven't changed.
We've always tried to take the high road, this whole thing. I've not got angry at anybody. The board's angry at the village?
No.
We're trying to do the right things for the right reasons.
Are you still facing litigation, though?
No. Well, that's been, that's been done away with, and then it, and then it's into arbitration, but then this new thing is.
No, that was, yeah, that was the intent, that the arbitration was to resolve to finality these issues which we have. What has come up is the question of whether or not these issues can even be reviewed. It's a jurisdictional question.
Litigate, right? They are looking to litigate this.
No, they're looking to stop the entire proceeding.
They're, they're looking to walk away and.
They don't want to live, they don't want to do anything.
Well, they have to, how would we resolve this? They go to the arbitrator, and he says, yeah, separation of powers, you go, you are going back to court. There's no other.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
When the arbitrator says, you know, you presented the separation of powers, it's not part of the original issue. I can't rule on this, we're back in court, we're in front of the judge.
In theory, I would say to you, no, Phil.
Who are we in front of?
Well, no one, case will be over. Case will be over.
Well, who pays what?
We pay our expenses, they pay theirs, and we go on with the existing contract, just as it has been.
And what about the amount that they say we owe them?
We pay it.
And we don't.
Well, no, not necessarily.
That's the issue.
They would persist in attempting to collect that.
What happened, just bring us through to the conclusion, because the next step is, they'll file suit again for that money. And we're back in court, so to answer your question, Jerry, yeah.
Yeah, potentially.
No.
Potentially, potentially, there has to be a resolution. If the arbitrator can't do it, yeah, they're not just going to go away, right?
They're going to wait and say, you know what, okay, let's just. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to be discussing more about this. We need, we already have our strategies, we've already started what we're going to be presenting in arbitration. We need to stay on it. I think we just need to go on with arbitration, but we'll decide that tonight in executive session, where we go from here.
But I just want to.
But I want to make sure that the public knew this, what was going on tonight. And that's why I put it in the general meeting versus in the executive session, because it does impact all of us and how credible we all are as leaders within our communities. It's easy to say, oh, I want to get along, but when the push comes to shove, it's very difficult sometimes.
As Doug knows, I had this conversation with him at length. It was my recommendation that this not be discussed in public, okay? Because again, I think it's very sensitive, it's subject to confusion, it's subject to misunderstanding, and it's subject to a lot of misinformation. But Doug's point about it being, probably the most accurate telling comment, as I indicated earlier, is that Doug's point about it being a maneuver to avoid the merits or the true presentation of the issues is absolutely correct.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying as an attorney is they have every right to make that argument. What I have a difficulty with is the arbitrator didn't shut them down. Rule on Monday, I'd find otherwise, and it's no indication that he's in any way prejudiced, but he's willing to consider the intellectual issue and make a ruling.
But see, my question is not the legality of this thing. We've all passed that, we've already agreed to go to arbitration. So the question of legality, do they have the right, it's a moral issue, is what I'm talking about.
Very possible.
That's all I'm talking about, it's a moral issue.
But you've got to understand, the villagers never agreed to go to arbitration. They were compelled to go to arbitration, it was a judge's order.
Now they're trying to.
Well, so they were never satisfied or happy with that decision. Now that we're here, they're exercising their legal rights to avoid the here from going forward.
But Dennis, they did accept it?
Never accepted.
No, no, they did, because they wanted, they wanted an attorney to do the arbitration versus three. I mean, we did go down the line some.
Procedures. I just wanted to get procedures, yeah.
And you did read with Cameron several times with Donovan.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So it was going that route?
Most definitely, most definitely. But again, you have to understand, it's like getting the death penalty, okay? You're convicted, we're going to hang you. You may not agree with it, but you're going to obey the law, because the system's going to enforce it on it.
Dennis, you're looking at this as an attorney.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We're not going to get this as municipal leaders and two municipal communities that we're responsible for. And you know, you can be legally wrong, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, you can be legally right, but be definitely wrong.
And I understand your position, absolutely. And I understand your position, absolutely.
I'm trying to resolve this with the other community for the people who live in both communities. And this legal maneuver, I just find appalling.
Yeah, it's not a question of were you right or are you wise? And we're wise. We want to settle this thing and get it behind us with the least amount of cost. What's happening is they keep, and we're concerned because whatever they do affects our bottom line.
Oh, yeah.
When you have a cost associated, they bring more attorneys in, they don't want to abide, they don't want to go to arbitration, they want a different legal maneuver, it costs us money.
No question. The mere fact that we have to brief this is going to cost money.
Exactly.
When I agree with you, in layman's terms, we were compelled to go to arbitration, we had a judge decide, go to arbitration, and we were willing to pursue it. No question, they are now trying not to pursue it. And in that sense, I absolutely agree with you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Okay. I wonder if we go on to another item then?
Yeah.
No, is anybody else in the public having they'd like to talk about? Ready?
There's something about sewer hearing that was going to take place shortly.
Oh, no, we put the word out, we canceled that because we don't have the, we're still working with the applicant to come up with a contract that we can then share with the public. So, and I don't know where, when and where that will be. But I had it on the schedule on Monday.
And we also have it on the schedule prior.
Yeah, just to clarify, it is heritage and as the board knows, they have submitted to a certain materials, but they're not complete. So any hearing with the residents of the district, if you will, in this instance, in Hamilton, would be premature. We don't have all the information. So we have to adjourn that to a later date. And they are working on it now, my understanding, the attorneys for heritage, and they're going to submit that and then we'll take our own revising.
Soon as it's ready, we'll do it. But good question. Anything else?
Just to clarify for anybody who might be watching the video, that issue is not separate from this issue of the dispute with the village because heritage will be tying into Hamiltonian, which is the core of the issue with the village. So it's all related.
It's all sewer.
It's all sewer. And heritage and Arcadia are the two districts that are at dispute.
Right. Good.
And by the way, I want to agree with you and disagree with you or correct you. I agree with you about what you said about people being sick of this petty bickering between the boards.
Bickering that is said.
But we are not two municipal communities, we are one community.
Yes.
We have two municipal entities, but that's at the core of this. And I believe where we all want to go. An understanding that we are one community and one does not exist without the other and that the health and well-being of both is interdependent.
Absolutely.
We understand that.
I know you do.
That's our whole point, yeah.
That is the whole point and I know you do on this side, but it just needs to be said, we are one community.
Yep.
Right. When you're in Chicago and someone says, "Where are you from?", you don't say the village of Goshen or you don't say, "Oh, the town of Goshen." It's Goshen. So that's how...
But by the way, not to be terribly adversarial about it, Dennis, but you didn't really answer Gary's question about what would you speculate is behind a chump change move?
Yeah. It's just this simple, again, if you follow, I can't really speculate what their motivation is, but simply put, whenever anyone for any reason is called upon to be responsible for some type of activity or act or decision, there's always risk that you could get some decision which is adverse to your interests. And I, as an attorney, cannot blame anybody for trying to avoid or eliminate that risk by eliminating the activity or the consideration. And that's the point. And there's no way of knowing, well, what their motivation is, other than, I honestly can say that if I was in the reverse and I was being faced with this, I would try in everything within my, you know, intellectual capacity to stop the matter from even being hurt. And I think that's what the village is doing. You know, in a nutshell. And that's why I don't disagree with what the town says, because you'd like to get it resolved. You'd like to have your day in court, present your case, let the chips fall where they may and get a decision in fairness for these citizens. That is not necessarily in the best interest of the village.
Well, it is because they're trying to get payment. So this will never be, I mean...
I understand.
They will pursue this in a different way if we don't go to arbitration.
In a less risky way...
It's not going to stop.
Right, in a less risky way from their position. Or to their position, I should say.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to go to an executive session to continue with that subject, but also, which is the status review of the village-town sewer arbitration?
Yeah.
Okay? Update status of the Time Warner franchise contract renewal, review the status of the Turi landfill litigation and the status review of any upcoming tax surcharges with the intent not to return.
Oh, move.
Second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Again, I'd like to thank you all for coming out in this dismal weather.
It's always a pleasure.
Are there numbers available for these surcharges?
That's what, that question was asked of Dennis, but Dennis will be able to supply those to you at some later date when, when we get it back from the, what do you call it, the plane that working out with our session. They're coming back.
Yeah, that happens to me too, layman.
But Dennis, can you answer that question?
I'm sorry, I did not hear it. I'm sorry.
I was just asking, are there numbers available with these surcharges of payback amounts?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I was, in fact, I was, yes, very interesting. If you call me in the morning, I can give them to you. I don't have a limited time. Yeah, absolutely.
Look at there, see.
In fact, even better, yeah, I'll call you. I mean, I realize you were doing a story. If you have your number, I'll call you.
You want my number?
Yeah, please.
Oh, 294...